You just hit the down arrow. Where you hit the up, you hit the down now. It goes down in half-degree increments. I don't know what to say.
Yeah, you can take a walk.
Notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act Pursuit to Public Law 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. I'd like to stand for it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the caucus meeting, number one, Run for the Pines Canines 5K Race Request.
This is the sixth year that this young man, Justin Rand, will be hosting the Run for the Pines for Canines 5K race. It's held out west of the Parkway in the vicinity of Dover. Good luck in Harry Road. We've never had any problems in the past. It's very well coordinated. He does speak with both Recreation, Public Works, and the police. The proceeds of the race do go to the Associated Humane Societies, or what we better know as Popcorn Park Zoo. So he's just requesting permission again for this fall, October 27.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that is all I have for the caucus meeting tonight. And we don't need to go into executive session prior to this meeting, so we can go right into town today.
Right into town. Okay. Excuse me. Okay. Accurate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act Pursuit to Public Laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. I'd like to have salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, second reading of ordinance 2018-01, amending Chapter 79 of the Municipal Code, Officers and Employees.
In order to township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 79 of Township Code titled Officers and Employees so as to create the position of Chief of Administrative Services. This is realigning some positions within the municipality in accordance to Civil Service Regulations. Second reading, open the floor.
Second reading, I'd like to open the floor to the public.
See, no, make motion to close it. Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance.
Motion on the ordinance.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2018-02, authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Exelon.
Ordinance of Township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing the First Amendment to an easement agreement with Exelon Generation Company, LLC. This is with regards to the easements that were signed in 2010, I believe, with regards to Exelon and the Finishers Farm property and the easements that are being utilized for the Barniget Ranch Rail Trail with regards to the right of first refusal for a portion of the property across the street and the million-dollar payment. And since Exelon has entered into a contract with the state of New Jersey to sell a portion of that land for a dredge disposal site, Lacy Township was entitled to a portion of that money, and we are receiving $500,000.
Move it.
Open the floor, second reading.
Open the floor to the public. Second reading.
See, no, make motion to close the floor. Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion.
Motion on the ordinance.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2018-03, setting salaries for seasonal winter snow contractors.
Ordinance of Township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, amending an ordinance titled, "In order to township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, affixing and determining salaries, wages, and compensation to the officers and employees and members of the governing body of the township." This is for former municipal employees that have their own heavy equipment or trucks that are able to help us during our snow season. It's $30 per hour for a truck driver and $35 per hour per heavy equipment operator.
Motion, open the floor, second reading.
See, no, make motion to close it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance.
Motion on the ordinance.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2018-58, appointing a conflict public defender.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of John Noback at the law offices of John J. Noback as conflict public defender for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
I'd like to abstain on that one.
No, this is...
On the conflict attorney.
No, we're doing public defender, conflict public defender. John Noback.
We're good then.
Okay.
No mistake. I don't have my reading glass on, I apologize.
Okay.
Resolution 2018-59, authorizing a change order for the railroad right-of-way connector road project.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing execution of amendment to the contract with P&amp;A Construction for the Railroad Avenue Extension Project Phase One. This is as we were making some improvements there, and we had to open up a portion of the roadway by Book Street. There is a pipe that has corroded and is failing, and we need to replace it. And unfortunately, it's an increase of $66,209 to the contract, which is about 2% of the original contract price. So in order for us to move on, we need to have that work replaced. It would be foolish for us to ignore the collapsing of those pipes and just to bypass it, so we're making it part of the project.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2018-60, authorizing a resignation of completion to Walters Family Apartments.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing a certificate of completion to Lacy Family Apartments for Block 1837, Lot 8.05. This is for just Phase One, the certificate of completion, which they need to have in order to satisfy requirements under their HMFA mortgage. And again, as I said, it is for Phase One. The engineer has signed off on the public improvements for the Phase One, and this will be sent in to the state for consideration. And now, at this point, we can start collecting our in lieu of money on Phase One.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2018-61, accepting a resignation of an employee.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, accepting the resignation of an employee. Our tax assessor has taken a job with another township, and we are out seeking a new one.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2018-62, authorizing the assessor to file appeals due to errors on assessments.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing the tax assessor to file an assessor's appeal to correct certain errors made on assessments for the year 2018 and authorizing the tax assessor as agent in filing petitions of appeals and rollback complaint forms. This is just an annual in-office correction that the assessors do, that we annually must adopt and send to the Ocean County Board of Taxation.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2018-63, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits out for the use of municipal facilities.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2018-64, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $2,171,371.51.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of January 11, 2018.
Move it. Second. Aye.
Motion to approve council meeting minutes of January 11, 2018.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license application for Lacy Elks Charitable Association and the Lenoka Harbor PTO.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor Tim McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. We were all at the Lenok Harbor EMS night, Saturday night. It was a great night. And they handed out some statistics that I just want to touch a little bit on. Uh, who's Mike? Are you kidding me? Just...
Technology's great.
Technology, it just went blank on me. They do a great job over there, and they answered 848 calls in 2017. And this one blew me away, that most of the calls occurred between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. I would have thought they would have occurred more towards the evening and so forth. And they also transferred 561 patients to hospitals, so I think, I mean, you're looking at more than one a day, one of that, so... And we will comment, when do these guys work? Because they're always doing this. I had a chance to stop down at the Lacy EMS, the new ambulance, and they re-chassis it. It saved us a ton of money. I think a new ambulance was about $300,000, and the chassis was about $130,000. So it's just the way to go. It looks awesome. They strike it almost exactly like the police car, so it looks great. One last thing there. Summer concert series, Jim and I are working on that. As I said last time, July 3rd with the Flowers, Tequila Rose. We're still going to have one in July, and one in August. We're just working on the bands on that, because we'll have the stage. And one of those is going to be out in Bamber. We're going to take one out to Bamber. And then, the Lacy Fest, we have the B Street Band, which is the Springsteen Band. They're going to close it. You know, we get done around 4:05, 4:30, 5:00, whatever it is, and then they'll set up and play. That'll be, you know, the last of the summer will be the B Street Band will close this out. So, Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Committee member Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. I just want to, I guess a couple months ago, we had a young lady here in the audience that was a graduate of Lacy High School, who has gotten into some social work and stuff, and she had invited a bunch of us to go down to Barniget for a family success center that they were opening called Oasis down in Barniget. And, you know, a couple of us went down there, and we told them we would put the word out that this is available to Lacy residents. Anybody that lives in Lacy is certainly welcome to go down there and, you know, use the facility. And they have a variety of different resources available, career development, parenting support, youth enrichment, parent-child activities. They deal, counsel you on nutrition, health and wellness classes, financial planning and budgeting. And they have computers available. They have everything that you would need if you want to try and get yourself into the workplace and don't have the ability to take and do it from your own home. They're down in Barniget. They're located at 175 Gunning River Road, Building C, and their phone number is 609-994-0200. So if you have any interest, we do have flyers in Town Hall here if you want to reach out to them. But it's nice to know that there is, you know, other resources out there without having to go all the way up to Tom's River for people that live within our community here. So, you know, I was very happy to be able to, Nikki and I have all went down together. And of course, Tim stole my thunder. I have it on paper here to the Lenok Harbor Ambulance Squad. I was hoping you'd write it one more. I just want to touch on what Tim said, because, you know, we go, as a committee, we go to a lot of these functions this time of year. We have six different squads in town between fire, ambulance, and the dive team. And we, you know, we're honored to get invitations, all of us get the opportunity to go and to, you know, mingle with the membership and see everybody on a social level during their installation dinners, you know, and really, it's our time to honor them, because all these people are volunteers, whether it be fire, dive team, EMS, and they put a tremendous amount of time in, you know, to make sure that the residents of Lacy have all the services available to them that they need. And they don't get paid. These people do not get paid anything. And I can tell you, if we had to have paid departments in this town, we would be looking at an astronomical amount of money that we would have to be funding. So, you know, I do nothing this time of year but applaud these people and thank them, thank their families, because we say it all the time, if you belong to a squad, it's not only your commitment, it's your family's commitment. Because when that, you know, radio goes off or whatever, the beeper, and that member of the family gets up from the dinner table or runs out from whatever they're doing, it does affect the family. So it's a, you know, a job that is so important for this community, it's a job in every community that's very important. And we don't make light of it enough. We've gone to the Lenok Harbor Fire Company, we've gone to Lenok Harbor EMS, and this weekend we have the dive team, and the next week we also have Lacy EMS, Fort River Fire to follow. So it's really, you know, we're very, very thankful. I just, you know, Timmy broke down the amount of EMS calls, the amount of transports to hospital, but the amazing thing is, if you break, I mean, they're really good with their statistics. If you break it down to man-hours, that squad alone, which is the one squad that does probably the least amount of calls versus Lacy. Lacy does even more because of the population in Fort River and Bamber section. The members there put in 23,399 hours of their time to work and do what they had to do for the residents of this town, which, you know, is a tremendous, you know, thing for them to do. And I thank them, I know the whole committee is very thankful for their hard work as always as every other squad in town. So that's all I have, Mayor. I'm going to dig and ditch Timmy's, my bad.
Thank you, Gary. Committee member Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't talked about it in a while, though. We're still chipping away at our county center designation.
Next time, thank you, guys.
It was a government turn very slowly. We're on a conference call this week, and hopefully I'll have some more report on it in a couple months. Unfortunately, it takes that long. Yeah, I also want to touch on the Lenok Harbor EMS installation dinner. I just want to thank the members and their families for allowing me to serve. We have an economic development committee meeting next Tuesday. And finally, I'd just like to wish Marcus Patrick the best of luck. His job in town is probably the hardest assessing, you know, when you're an assessor, assessing houses, you're looking at subjective value that goes into it. He gets the blunt of the complaints in town. So I just want to thank him and wish him the best of luck. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Committee member Kennas. Committee member Curatolo?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to echo some of the same thoughts of my colleagues up here. Without folks like fire police and EMS, we have a town that really just doesn't work. They're called the bravest, and they earn that title each and every day, each and every shift. That's why we support them. And I'm proud of the way that we've supported them and keeping the taxpayer in mind as well. When we opt, when it's feasible, as our deputy mayor has stated, to do a re-chassis instead of a new vehicle, and we can recomponent and reconfigure, that's a win-win. That's smart government at work. And, you know, to keep our folks safe out in the field and to be able to save some money for the taxpayer is important. So I want to commend all the officers that were sworn in last week. You know, I hope God walks with them. It's that important. We really appreciate what they do. I'd like also to report this past Monday, the 22nd, there was a solid waste advisory committee meeting in Tom's River. Our chief of our DPW, Dan McGill, he was present over there. And what I'd like to report is, people that know me know that I'm involved with public health at the county. Upstairs is our environmental division. We had a conversation with the gentleman who really oversees the entire environmental division for the entire county. He commented on the recycling center and the work that's done back there at DPW. He called it, and I will quote him, "a model that he would like to see emulated around the county." So the folks back there are really doing some good work, and to hear that at the county level, that has oversight over all of the municipalities. And a colleague of mine, I thought that was very heartening, wanted to bring that to the people of Lacy and our leadership up here as well. Moving forward, once a year, the Tuxedo Driver Resource Center hosts a 3D event, that's Drinking, Drugging, Driving. Always a choice and never an accident. I'm going to get out of the habit of calling it an accident, because texting, drinking, or drugging and driving, it's not an accident, it's a choice. So I'm proud to report, this year we'll have our freeholder there, freeholder Little, our prosecutor. We will have students from Lacy High School. We will have police officers and our chief from Lacy. This is an open forum at the Ocean County Mall on February 9th, starting at 11:30 a.m. is the commemoration. You know, it's going to be similar to our Ask an Officer, Meet an Officer Day down at Denton Avenue at the middle school. So it's going to be a positive time with lots of insight from community leaders, policymakers, people from Trenton, people from Lacy. And it's important for me, being up here, to always involve the folks from Lacy over the years. They've always responded. We have a strong contingent from Lacy. I'm very proud of that. And we want to support our teachers, our substance awareness counselors, our police. They come out, and we'll hope that you come out as well. It's February 9th at the Ocean County Mall, 11:30 a.m., Center Court. I also, in closing, I would say this. I brought up with our mayor on the telephone earlier in the week, we're always up here talking in unison about all the great people that we have, and there's so many, and it's too many to name, each time in a short coming program like this that I'm having now. So I think it's appropriate. What I would propose is, the last meeting of the year, I want to propose a volunteer Hall of Fame. Each year, we choose one volunteer from our township. We put that name on a plaque somewhere in Town Hall, and each year we just build on it and build on it and build on it, so successive generations can see the people. They'll be memorialized up here. There's so many people that do so much. If the committee is amenable to it, we could name more than one each year, or we could name a group. But I think it's something that really merits that type of recognition, to be memorialized in Town Hall as something very small we could do at virtually no cost. If there is any cost, I'd volunteer to pay for it. And I know my colleagues would as well. So it's something I would look forward to and have more discussion open in public. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Committee member? My comments will be brief, but to touch on what they were talking about, the statistics for Lenoka Harbor. If you took them 23,000, I'll use 24,000 hours, and you timed it by the average rate, it comes out to 350,000 a year. That's just for one organization. That's what it would be if you had employees, and they're all volunteers. And I'm sure the rest of them are even higher as they go up. So I want to thank the volunteers. That means a lot. And anybody that sees any of the volunteers out on there, you know, give them recognition. They do a great job in everything in the town, from our employees of the town, they're not volunteers, but our employees, and all of the firehouses and all the EMSs. As they said, we went to that event there and had a great time and learned a lot. This is the first report I've ever seen showing that, the breakdown of everything that they've done and the calls, which I look forward to seeing a lot more of that. I got to attend also, the Rolling Thunder had their pasta night, Pasta Day. They do it for the veterans, they raise money. It was very successful. The mayor of Berkeley Township, Carmen Amato, came. So it was a nice day. We all talked with the Rolling Thunder. They do a lot of great things, as we know. Also, as Tim, I think Deputy Mayor mentioned, about the Troop 156 down at the Methodist Park, did you mention that?
No, I did not mention that.
We went down there, Deputy Mayor and I, and they had a fundraiser for the Relay for Life. They were selling hot chocolate, which I thought was really great, and it was a nice showing.
Well, you and I have an affinity for chocolate, so...
Yes. It was really good. They had all kinds of cookies and cakes, and it was really good. They said they did quite well in raising money for the Relay for Life. Tomorrow, Municipal Alliance Senior Luncheon, always look forward to that, great people down there. We have this Saturday, the installation of officer for the underwater recovery. I also would like to wish Marcus Patrick good luck in his endeavors. He's done a great job, you know, just he's found bigger and better things to go to and to fit his needs, so it's great. Tonight, before our meeting, I had to, I was interviewed for the first time, that was the first interview, and I've never had anything like that, but Matthew Cronin from Boy Scouts interviewed me and asked some questions, which I thought was great. He touched a lot on the power plant. I hope I was some help to you. Like I said, I'm a realist. I told you the way I thought it was, and that's the way it is. So I think we're going to, it's going to be a great thing, we're going to be fine. And I think with all of us up here, we're going to make that work the way it has to. Let's see what else, so I don't forget anything. Regina, you asked me about the snowstorms. I found out on the police website, there's an area on there called Code Red. Anybody out there that, when there's a storm, we do not want the cars on the road. What you can do is, we have a calling center, you can call, get online to the police website, Code Red, and put your phone number in there, and they would, on a storm, they would automatically call. So I hope that was an answer to you, and it's the way it goes. Other than that, I don't have no other comments. I'd just like to end with, I would like to again thank all of the employees of Lacy Township, the volunteer throughout the township for all that they do. I'll now take comments from the public. Please state your name and address.
Harry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue. I'm a little under the weather.
I hear that.
I missed my Relay for Life meeting because of this, but I wanted to just bring people up to date. Well, actually, the top thing is quite important on here. Relay for Life of Berkeley, Lacy is a community-wide fundraising event that benefits the American Cancer Society as we celebrate survivors, remember those we lost, and fight back as one. I want to talk about, we're having our kickoff party on Thursday, February 22nd, starting at 6:30 p.m. The snow date is March 1st. at 6:30 p.m., the snow date is March 1st. It'll be at Mill Pond Elementary School, 210 Western Boulevard, Lenoka Harbor. The theme for this year's relay is Carnival for a Cure, so the teams will be doing things for a carnival theme. Also wanted to mention, on a nice little card they gave me, because I did miss the meeting, mark your calendar, 2018 Relay for Life of Berkeley, Lacy, June 9th and 10th, 2018, at Veterans Park in Berkeley Township. Thank you very much.
The time of the February 22nd?
The kickoff is Thursday?
6:30.
February 22nd, 6:30 p.m. at Mill Pond Elementary School, which the address is 210 Western Boulevard, Lenoka Harbor, but everybody here knows where that is, so. Thanks much.
Thank you.
He was saying how easy it was, he was, "I can't get any questions," so we got to come up with a question.
Your name and address, please.
Jim LaToule, Lacy Township. Good evening, Mayor. Just to follow up, over the years, I've come before the committee about the situation on Lacy and Dover Road, if you're aware or not aware, there was another serious accident there a few days ago, which car came through the stop sign again. Myself and Officer Cirque, who was off duty at the time, had to control traffic and take care of people. The county has to do something about it, it is. There's been fatal accidents, serious accidents here, and every time I hear a crash, you know, I cringe if it's my wife, my son, you know, it's only a block away from my house. And this accident was so bad that when the car came through, it hit the truck that was going westbound, the truck spun around, and you know, in the past, I talked about that little house that sits there on the corner blocks, hit their car, drove their car through the fence, and luckily didn't hit the people or their house. So it's really something, and not just some traffic signal there, but as I talked about back in the planning board meeting, when you were there, when structural managers talked about, they need right turn lanes, because when you slow down to turn off onto Dover Road, whether you go north or south, you've got tandems, tractor trailers coming 50, 55, right up, and again, so it's a serious thing. I've spoken to various freeholders over the years, I don't want to say it's swollen on deaf ears, but I've never even seen an engineer out there. They did a great job repaving west of that, and when I saw them out there, I thought for them, they were trying to do something with the intersection.
They're not the least.
So that's my own thing. The other thing, while I'm talking about the county, again, coming home the other day, coming through an intersection by Manchester, and a car going east made a left to go on Manchester again. I don't know how big a signs you've got to put there for people to see, but, you know, you sit in there, and the last thing you expect is a car to come right, head onto you, but I also noticed the sign on Wehawken that faces, it's facing east, it's all faded out, the car that made...
Oh, again? Okay. We have, in the next couple of weeks, we do an annual county engineer meeting, where